Okay, we'll call it order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, March 23rd to order. If I could ask everybody to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands in one nation, undergrad, native citizen, with the duty to serve our law.
Alright, welcome everybody. What a great crowd tonight. Must have some student recognition. And it looks like a lot of great things have been happening in the high schools. First of all, roll call please.
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Alex Dellicoli.
There.
Matt Grady.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Bill Radsor.
Here. Okay, so we have everybody present tonight. Our agenda tonight, we'll have some student recognition and then a PARCC update. That would be P-A-R-C-C update. Nothing really from the President's Report. We'll have updates from our student school board reps, updates from the superintendent. We will approve the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier this month in committee. Updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. Steven, anything property tonight? Nothing, right? CEDOL?
I do tonight.
Okay, brief update on CEDOL. And Jim, Illinois Association? Nothing? Okay. Alright, let's start with our education presentation and all of our student recognition.
So obviously, we have quite a number of students we want to recognize this month. And we're going to start with Libertyville High School and Dr. Scott.
Good evening. It's such a pleasure to start our board meeting this way. I have to say, I think you guys will agree with me, this is always the very best part of any board meeting, is student recognition. And we're ready to begin this evening with the LHS Dance Team coached by Jackie Newman.
Alright, I'm going to start. Hi, I'm Jackie Newman, University Dance Team Coach at Libertyville High School. And I'm going to first call up my JV coach, Casey Dugan. She was a huge support of this year. So we're going to call the girls up one by one, and then I'll tell you a little bit about their accomplishments. So we're going to start with Mary Ahern.
Sydney Anderson.
Abby Arnold.
Darby Burrows.
Amy Dykstra.
Krista Edson.
May Fisher.
Abby Gorman.
Lily Lehrman.
Kristen Luce.
Stephanie Luce.
Shannon Miller.
Maddie Norris.
Katerina Pong.
Nina Ryder.
Nellie Richardson.
Amelia Schmidt.
Stephanie Thomas.
Nikki Westphal.
Emily Yates.
Claire Ziegler.
Kelsey Yaminski.
And so just to have a quick recap of the year, they had such an awesome year, and they were working so hard, and they were very dedicated. In our sectionals, they placed first to bring them down to state, which was wonderful. And once we went down to state in our prelims, they took their jazz, and they took third the first night. And, or did I skip that? Fourth? No, third, okay. So it was third, I remember it blank. So it was third the first night, and so we were hoping to keep our third the next day. And to our surprise, and obviously with a lot of their hard work, we ended up taking second in the state, which was so wonderful. It was so great to see them recognized after 10 months of two really long seasons. So I'm very proud of you girls and your hard work and dedication. So. Thank you guys for such a wonderful year, and thank you for recognizing us.
Stay up there. We want to get the picture and take your hand. This is Dr. Grady. Congratulations. It's going to be even tighter when you try to make it.
Yeah. They want them in two rows.
We're going to have you guys arrange them, so you do this all the time?
Thank you.
Get everybody? Okay, congratulations.
I had a chance to see that routine yesterday, and it was absolutely breathtaking. So congratulations. Next, I have Mike Cunningham, and he's going to present boys swimming awards.
Thank you. This is my first year as head coach of these gentlemen, and they did a phenomenal job. I'm going to have them all come out together, since we are a bit of a smaller group. Come on up, gentlemen. This year, we finished second at sectionals overall with 99% best times by, with averaging five-second drop in every single event, which was pretty awesome. Our state qualifiers were the 400 free relay, the 200, we had, excuse me, the 200 freestyle relay, the 400 freestyle relay, and then Mr. Harrington in his individual events. I will hand their certificates out to them afterwards, but we have, oh my goodness, Eric Turner, apologize. A little nervous up here. Eric Turner, Matt Harrington, Noah Janison, and Mark Boynton, representing our state qualifying team. The gentlemen finished 10th overall in the relay, and then Matt finished third in the 100-fly, and fourth in the 200 freestyle, and it's been an amazing ride. So, one big more round to hand for these gentlemen.
Oh, I have, there's no hair underneath there.
Okay, guys, why don't you slide over this way just a little bit, and we can get away from the post. Yeah, put Coach in the middle. That's.
Our girl swim season was way back in the fall, and we do not have the girls coach here tonight, Eric Rogers, but I'm going to announce four young ladies who were part of a 200 medley relay team that took 10th place. Macy Newbauer. Emma Riker.
I'm Macy, I'm here. I'm there to swim here.
Okay, so, surprise, surprise. So up here we have Meredith and Stacy. Macy, who is not here tonight, was also 12th place in the 100-yard dress. So congratulations on a great year.
100 butterfly and the 50-fly in the relay.
I swim the backstroke leg.
Okay.
Dr. Grady, the board president.
And we'll take your picture.
Alright, yeah, just slide over a little bit.
Great job.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm John Gilliam, the principal of Vernon Hills High School. Congratulations to Libertyville on all those athletic accomplishments. Both schools have some All-State Music Awards to announce tonight. The Illinois Music Educated Association does All-State Musicians, and so both Vernon Hills and Libertyville have some. I'm going to introduce Drew Russell, our Fine Arts Department Supervisor.
Hello. This October, all of our students, or many of our students, took the trip all the way to Stevenson High School to audition for ILMEA District Band Orchestra and Choir. And they did an unbelievable job representing us, and based on the results of that audition, a bunch of them, from both, as you'll see soon, Libertyville and Vernon Hills, were selected for All-State, which is quite an accomplishment. Many of our neighboring schools get one, two, you know, no students in, and we continually get 10, 12 students at each school. So it really is quite an accomplishment and a testament, not only to these students and their parents, but also to the wonderful education that's happening in each department and the wonderful instruction that's happening. So let's just go ahead and give everybody a round of applause. And then I'll call, I'll call the students out that we have with us. First up, Mark Edler. And our very own, or your very own, Lynette Huerta. Next up is Zachary Kurtzenberger. Finley Long. Michael Ricky. Anthony Sandry. His bracket is not faring too well. Tyler Walls. And I think that's everybody that could make it this evening.
Good evening. Here are Libertyville High School ILMEA All-State Musicians. David Chow. Nathan Golden. Harriet Legan. And Megan Young.
Well, first of all, let's give a big round of applause to all of our students and friends. You know, we appreciate all the parents and family members that came out tonight to support the students, but we know, because we've all been involved with students over the years, that this has been a group effort, that the students have not ended up here tonight by chance, they've ended up because they've gotten lots of support, in many cases financial as well as time and encouragement through the, sometimes the good times and sometimes some of the rough patches, as the kids have moved their way to be championship levels and the best in the state like they have. So, we want to tell you first, this is the most fun thing that we do, okay? Is to do student recognition. Pat, would you agree with that, right? This is what makes it all worth it for us, to see the kids so successful. But we want to take a moment and have all the parents stand up, and we want to give you a round of applause for your support of your students and both of our high schools in District 128. Come on ladies, stand up. Now, enough's obligated to tell you that if you want to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but we won't be offended if you decide to leave. Okay, so thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Can you get one?
I know, I know. We'll see how it turns out when we see the pictures. I'm sure they won't be of very good quality.
I nearly had one last.
Can I water?
They're both pretty cool.
This is Dr. Fisher with the PARCC update.
Thank you. And good evening. My comments tonight are focusing on how well D-128 handles PARCC testing, rather than a commentary really on PARCC testing itself. I can quote Dr. Gilliam next to me, who, we were talking about the update focusing on the test and how we did it, and he said, "Like everything else we do in 128, we did it extremely well." And that's the message for tonight. On March 3rd, approximately 800 students in ninth-grade English classes engaged in online PARCC testing for the very first time in District 128. Many schools across the state used March 3rd as the official kickoff for PARCC testing. On March 10th, nearly 500 students enrolled in Algebra I courses, took the second round of performance-based PARCC assessment. Across the country, media stories really focused on the very valid concerns and problems with PARCC tests. The technology readiness of the test, the quality of the test items, and the loss of instructional time. These issues have led to students' walkouts locally and in other states. While we experienced PARCC glitches that these walkouts were concerned about, while we also share concerns about the loss of instructional time and the total readiness of the PARCC assessment, the really good news in District 128 is that our students persevered through any glitches, they engaged fully in the new test, and an environment that was made as positive as possible given the circumstances. Our students' PARCC testing experience was optimized as a direct result of a number of factors, and I want to focus on those first. The highly effective instructional technology staff, led by Bob Bartnik and Temple Murphy, who ensured that the glitches were not caused by D-128 problems. If the, if this, if PARCC was going to run smoothly anywhere, it was going to run smoothly in District 128 because of the preparation of our IT staff. The expertise and the superhuman organizational efforts of building teams, led by Ray Albin and Joe O'Brien, who anticipated and proactively addressed potential issues, thereby avoiding major problems. The amount of planning time that went into this testing was amazing, and every detail was anticipated and planned for. Again, if PARCC was going to go well anywhere, it was going to be in our district. It was also due to the consummate professionalism of our staff, who proctored this entirely new format test by ensuring a caring and stress-reduced climate for students. The level of caring, the level of organization, the level of willingness of teachers to enter into this unknown territory with very little trepidation was really admirable in those schools. The patience, fortitude, and genuine good nature of our amazing students at both schools, who again, were experiencing testing that was very different and yet took it in stride. Some finished early and sat silently for up to half an hour or more, while other students finished the test. It was really inspirational to watch how, despite, you know, the very real concerns that students would have, that teachers had, approaching the test with, you know, "We'll do this, we'll see how it goes, and we'll take it as seriously as we can." The decision to test mainly freshmen rather than mainly juniors also was one of the significant factors in how testing went in District 128. That decision was made possible largely due to Prentice Lee's collaborative advocacy efforts at the state level. This minimized some of the disruptions to instruction, because we were able to administer that performance-based test on Monday, March 3rd, excuse me, Tuesday, March 3rd, with the juniors taking ACT. If the juniors had been testing in PARCC, there would have been much more disruption to instructional time. We got that flexibility because of Prentice's work at the state level in collaboration with other superintendents. The highlights, if you want to call them highlights, of our testing experience was that the IT department determined that the network was at no time overloaded, our network was able to handle the number of students testing online for the first time, and none of the glitches were caused by anything from our end. None of the glitches or experience were specific to the Chromebooks or to the battery life of the Chromebooks, that testing format worked fine. Teacher proctors required minimal training to successfully proctor the new online format. Again, that was because so much time was spent in advance reviewing protocols and procedures and developing very precise and focused training materials. The classroom setting that we used on March 3rd and the large-group library setting on March 10th, both worked very well. Both the March 3rd-only test takers in attendance and the March 10th regular school day administration worked, so we were able to pull this off despite the problems associated with trying to run a test for some students while the rest of the students were having regular classes. Some of the problems that we experienced with PARCC, especially on March 3rd, Ray pointed out, and both Bob and Temple kept really precise notes of what was happening throughout the testing, that the number of restarts on March 3rd surpassed the number of test takers that day, so that our IT staff had to go and restart the test more times than we had students taking the test. Again, that was likely due, well, we know it was due to PARCC, but it was likely due to the large number of test takers experiencing PARCC the first time on that date. Many of those restarts were due to unclear directions, some technology glitches, occasionally due to student input errors, like typing the wrong number of the steel code to begin testing or the wrong password. So some of those were, you know, just student typing errors, but when we, when calls were made to PARCC on March 3rd to the helpline, there was no answer. We persevered, we got through it, and, you know, students engaged in the test in a way, as I said earlier, that made the most of the experience. They took it as a challenge, they did believe that some of the questions were appropriately challenging and asking them things that they had focused on and learned well in classes. But, you know, that doesn't overshadow some of the ongoing problems with loss of instructional time that we will continue to address. On March 10th, this restart issue was greatly reduced because of the error messages that we received on March 3rd. The IT staff, Ray, Joe thoroughly went over those restart messages, thoroughly went over the directions and changed directions to prevent some of the student input errors that caused the restarts. So, again, the staff was highly attentive to the protocols with the test and adjusted in D-128 the protocols to make more sense for our students than the PARCC manual had published. The test format was somewhat problematic. Students reported problems with test questions that were not displaying content correctly, inexact directions, the inability to scroll to highlighted sections that were referenced in the directions, and other issues. The IT solution of restarting and resuming the students' tests helped students to overcome some of these issues, but again, when results come in from PARCC, you know, the results will not tell us entirely about student achievement or student abilities, they'll have something to do with many of these glitches that were experienced as well. Another concern to keep in the forefront is that despite our efforts to schedule testing with the least possible disruption to instructional time, students involved in testing on March 10th and again on May 18th will miss instruction in their regularly scheduled classes. There's no way to avoid this with the amount of testing that's going on unless we shut down school for all students more frequently, and we're just not willing to do that. Moving forward, on May 18th, these same students who took the first round of PARCC tests, the performance-based assessment, will take the second round, the end-of-year assessment. Those two scores combined will result in a score for students at the end of this administration. The setting for these tests is going to be in a larger-scale setting, the Field House at both schools, and so we'll test one more venue for administering an online test in a setting, and we'll again highlight the capabilities of the D-128 IT staff and building leaders who are planning and making this work to the degree that we can.
I'd just say one more thing. I agree Joe O'Brien and Ray Albin were critical to this process, and I just want to say, Ray had a baby this week. Not on Tuesday, the day of the PARCC test, but on Wednesday. So amidst that whole organization that was going on for.
As a bit of reward for all of us, moving forward. And I think, so the question becomes, Rita, thank you for that very good report, and we've got a great administrative team, we have wonderful teachers in the district, and of course, we have great students, and they made it work given the context that we have. The question becomes, and where do we go from here with all the conversation about PARCC? We will be doing PARCC in Illinois next year, and I can tell you that with certainty because it's in the budget for next year, and I'll be down in Springfield several times this spring on budget-related issues and some other legislation that's concerning to us here in the district. And we'll have an opportunity to have input, as will Rita and Katka and the principals through IPA, moving forward. Unless ESEA, which we better know now as No Child Left Behind Act, is reauthorized in the House and the Senate at the federal level, the Illinois waiver, PARCC, is written into the waiver that we've received on No Child Left Behind from the US Department of Education. So unless there is a change of NCLB, which we're very hopeful for, by the way, it's one of the higher priorities of Republican-dominated House and Senate at the federal level at this point, but unless there's some change to that, where waivers go away in this year, before our budget is approved for next year, we are going to be doing PARCC next year. And. in the House and the Senate at the federal level, the Illinois waiver, PARCC, is written into the waiver that we've received on No Child Left Behind from the U.S. Department of Education. So unless there is a change of NCLB, which we're very hopeful for, by the way, it's one of the higher priorities of Republican-dominated House and Senate at the federal level at this point, but unless there's some change to that where waivers go away in this year before our budget is approved for next year, we are going to be doing Park next year. And we will continue to advocate for fine-tuning that test and bringing the amount of testing down in the state, but anything we do in Illinois has to be, is subject to approval by the United States Department of Education based on the waiver that we submitted. And as you may remember, if we weren't the last, we were next to the last in terms of receiving waivers. It took us three and a half years to get an NCLB waiver the first time around. So what's happening in the budget at the state right now is there is an RFP request for proposal to do the college-based test, and that's the first time in 12 or 13 years that the state has gone out. What that means is ACT has been our dominant test in the Midwest, although virtually law colleges and universities will take an SAT as well. For the first time that any of us can remember, they're actually opening that up, and that would be SAT. And SAT has developed a model, an eight-to-eleven testing model and a new version of SAT, so they will actually be doing competitive proposals this year. So we may be doing ACT or SAT next year for our college-based test, but the local state test will be Park unless those dynamics are changed. Now, your question then becomes, well, why don't we just get another waiver? Because it took three and a half years to get the first waiver. It's not an easy process to go through that. What about the states that dropped Park? There are several examples that have gotten lots of media attention. States that have dropped, there's a misconception that states that have dropped Park don't have to do any testing, and that is absolutely incorrect. They've had to come up with an alternative test. Many states had to really kind of struggle. They spent as much money as they would have on Park to pull a test together in very short order as they've been pulling out since July. And that assessment still has to be approved by the United States Department of Education. So what's the, for the public, what's the tie here? Why would, you know, why would we do this beyond the fact that we're actually asking higher-level questions, more application of knowledge, on a test that arguably needs refinement at this point? And the reality is that all state federal funding is tied to doing this nationally kind of recognized assessment, whether it's Park, or it's smarter balance, or it's a test that's written by two scholars at the University of Illinois, for example, in Illinois. So we are under requirement to do that. Well, so what? Who cares what the federal government tells us to do? Illinois receives over $1 billion in federal funding, flow-through funding, and we receive some of that funding in District 128, although we're not as dependent as some other school districts are, obviously with our outstanding tax base that we have here. But the reality is, it goes as a state, okay? So we are viewed as a whole state. If you look at Chicago Public Schools, for example, they are almost $1 billion in debt in the current fiscal year. So it was no surprise to anyone, when the push came at the end, that Chicago Public Schools backed down and they gave the test, right? Because they can't afford to lose their share of that $1 billion when they're almost $1 billion in debt in the current fiscal year. So that's kind of a broad overview of where we're at, but more locally, as they develop the budget between now and hopefully May 31st, although that may run into summer session this year, Park is already in there. So what is the fight this year? What kind of things would we be pushing back on this year? One of the things that we'll be pushing back on is the budgeted amount again is nine, 10, and 11. And we are only required by the federal government to test in one grade, 9 through 11. So why would we do 9th grade, 10th grade, and put our juniors through an incredibly difficult spring in terms of assessment when we don't need to do that? As Rita mentioned, and to the credit of the state superintendent and his team, he was amenable to that argument when we met with him before the tri-conference in November down in Chicago. The next week actually gave us the option to take the juniors, only do one year, and take the juniors off the testing wheel if we desire to do that. So our conversation with the state board this year, and whether it's Dr. Cook or it's a new state superintendent in the next few months, will be, why would we expend the extra dollars when we're only required to have that test once at the high school level? And we would argue again with some clarity that it should be 9th grade. That should be the year that we should be testing, or to give us an option as they did last year. So arguably, Park has a bad taste in many people's mouths because the implementation pick-your-descriptor was not good for almost a year. And that has done as much to probably undermine the credibility, what credibility Park had than anything else. But I think in talking to superintendents, and I know Rita has talked to her colleagues, I'm sure John and Marina have talked to some of their principal colleagues, by and large across the state, we had a very similar experience. Some districts had more problems with technology because they didn't have the technology infrastructure in place that we put in place, you know, over the years, and they don't have the tech personnel that we have. So they may have struggled a little bit more on that end, but by and large, it was not nearly as bad, if you want to use that word, as maybe we all thought it was going to be, as Rita has captured in her comments. So we're going to hear more about Park moving forward. We're going to see what adjustments they might make based on the feedback they've got, received, what moves the state board might make within the waiver to reduce the testing windows. Obviously, very helpful to us when we have calendar dates in, you know, upfront, so we don't have to do calendar amendments all the time like we're doing again tonight to accommodate the testing, and hopefully as we go through the second cycle, the information will be more formal. This is going to continue to be a very hot topic, I think, around the state and across the country. That debate will continue at the federal level as they go through the House and the Senate versions of the no child, reauthorization of the No Child Left Behind Act. I can tell you locally here, I'm serving on Senator Kirk and Congressman Dolan's education advisory boards, and that is at the top of their agenda list. And so they have been wonderful in reaching out to us, taking direct feedback from superintendents to take back to Washington as they're working with their legislators, and they're trying to develop a bipartisan coalition that can reauthorize a piece of legislation that every Democrat and Republican believes is broken. It's one of the few things they agree on in Washington. Now it's, what does the fix look like? That trade-off is between, the Democrats would like to maintain more federal control and oversight, and the Republicans would like to back some of that off and give it back to the states. So that's kind of where the line is right now in the chasm they're trying to bridge to get the legislation moving forward. So with that said, any questions for Rita on Park testing, Bill?
So the current sophomores will take their ACT next year, will still take the ACT and not Park test for college assessments?
Well, they'll take the ACT or the SAT depending on who the state picks.
Okay, but they're going to take one of those versus the Park test next year?
Yes.
So no one in our school yet has been to take the Park test or their college assessment as far as we're told.
Right, correct.
But maybe not in them for a long time.
None of the colleges are viewing Park as an admissions test at this point. There has been some movement in the community college group to accept Park status as an indicator of readiness for credit-bearing courses in community colleges. It's a placement test you can place into, but no one is yet talking about using Park as an admissions test.
Okay, and that's where I was going with that.
Yeah, and the big win, really, Bill, the big win in, you know, our work in Springfield last year was getting the state, forcing the state, if you will, to maintain the ACT test, because that was not in the budget at this time last year, is when we started to go down and testify on the importance of that. And the legislators, not the state board, really forced that issue after hearing from constituents like us. It's interesting when you're testifying in Springfield, and not all legislators know the ins and outs of public education, but they all understand ACT. When you have that conversation with the legislature, because either they've taken the ACT, their kids have taken the ACT, their grandkids have taken the ACT, so it was just a matter of going down two or three times to testify on the importance of maintaining that at a $14 million cost, and that was really valuable. In 2001 or '02, prior to the ACT test being given to all students in the state, the number of juniors taking the ACT in Illinois was around 60%. And for the last 12 or 13 years, 100% of the juniors in the state of Illinois have taken the ACT, which has opened the door for a lot of students to go to college who may have not had a family tradition of doing that, may have not thought they had the means to do that, and lo and behold, they've scored well enough, they find out they can get financial assistance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So very valuable. So that was a huge win, and the good news this year is because of the RFP, it's already written in the budget for next year. So we don't have to fight that battle again, which is a comfort to all of us, to your point, I think. Any other Park questions? Thanks again to John and Marina, their teams, Rita instrumental in working with the folks at the building level, and of course, our, you know, outstanding teachers and our tech staff, and for those students who, you know, did as good as they could on the assessments this time around.
We were hoping to get the seniors that to take it, but...
Nobody volunteered, John. We talked to them about that at one point.
Standardized tests.
Okay, so Rita, thank you.
Okay, updates for your grade. Updates from our school board representatives?
All right, so it's the end of Progress Report 6. So we have a lot of competitions happening for clubs and academics. The debate team just had their state competition this past weekend at U of I at Springfield. Seniors Pooja Sajiv and Lucia Zhang were ACTA finalists in the public forum division, and Anka Rustovi was an ACTA finalist in the Lincoln Douglas Debate Division. Y's also just had their competition, I think, two weeks ago. Junior Elliot Stanky placed first in both physics and math, and he's qualified for the next competition in May. Hannah Luizzo achieved a state qualifying score in chemistry, which is also advancing to the state competition. A number of math-oriented kids just took the AIME exam, which is a three-hour test. So I did not take that test. And that, so high scorers on that test were chosen to sit for the U.S. competition, which results in the selection of the international travel team. Similarly, there was a physics competition, and Senior Sean Duffy sat for that. If he does well enough on that semifinal exam, he joins the national team and goes to Mumbai to take the international test. Intermural badminton is about to begin, and many spring sports are starting to have their first games of the season. Lots of seniors are starting to make college decisions, and Ms. Ballister and Mrs. London and the CRC are sort of helping us through that, and they are pretty incredible in terms of the support that they provide. There's also a new club at LHS, which a lot of kids that I know have joined, the Dungeons and Dragons Club. People are making their own dragons, and they're really into it. So that's all from LHS.
Hi, guys. From Vernon Hills High School. Sports-wise, we have baseball, started their season so far, and all of our outdoor sports were successfully able to play their first game, which hasn't happened since I've been here in high school. First games have always been canceled, so that's a success. Unfortunately, the weather today wasn't so promising, so I'm sure games and practices will be held indoors or canceled tomorrow. Boys volleyball just had a former alum help out with conditioning, owns his own conditioning company, so he came by, it was awesome. I was there to watch that, and also they participated in a community service event at First Presbyterian Church in Librigo. And girls track and field had a Carthage meet and placed seventh overall and exceeded indoor records. So Vernon Hills is doing very well, spring sports so far. For student activities, on Friday, March 20th, Spark, which stands for Supporting Peers and Reaching Kids, hosted a free movie night for students to watch Big Hero 6 in the Studio Theater. They could enjoy a snack and watch a free movie with friends. Future Medical Professionals of America, which is a club that was started by a sophomore here at Vernon Hills High School, will have its fourth meeting tomorrow, and I know several students that attend the meeting, and they love the club. They practice things such as sutures and injections, and lots of students attend the meeting and truly enjoy to learn the skills which they hope to use in the future.
Practice on what?
I actually did go to the meeting. We practiced on oranges.
Yeah, yeah. Not oranges.
Yeah, it is.
We weren't like grabbing it or anything. No, it was great, it was really awesome.
It's never too soon to start planning prom, which is a hotly spoken topic currently. We have already chosen this year's prom theme, which is masquerade. It will be held on May 16th, and it was recently sent with graduation announcements, which I received today. I don't know if you guys did. VH Show, the environmental club at Vernon Hills, is promoting Earth Hour, which is a worldwide movement to power down at whatever local time for one whole hour. For where we live, it is at 8:30 PM on Saturday night, and so they will be announcing that at school. We have recently announced our ten contestants for Top Cougar. It is a satirical pageant-style event for seniors to be a part of, and lots of planning and preparation is underway to put on the show, which takes place on April 18th.
Okay, hi. So for music, we are just jumping around everywhere. So this is the Vernon Hills Jazz Band's first year doing competitions, and they did not disappoint. They just placed first in their division at the Jazz in the Meadows competition that took place at Rolling Meadows High School, and they took second overall at that entire competition. And they also placed second at the Mundial Jazz Festival, so they're really good. If you ever get a chance to see them, they're really good. Orchestra recently took 102 students to Chicago to see DePaul University's production of The Magic Flute. It's a pretty cool campus, I'm going to DePaul next year. Go DePaul. Orchestra and band recently had concerts these past few weeks in which senior soloists Mia Kandosia on voice and Alyssa Chaw on violin were showcased. They were awesome, I was at both of them. Awesome. And spring break is next week, woo-hoo! Band and choir are getting out of here. Band is going to Hawaii, and choir is going to Paris, Amsterdam, and Brussels. So we're all jealous. And that's all for music, thank you.
So how did we miss that opportunity? Yeah, I missed that, John.
So my curiosity is getting the best of me. What does one do in a Dragons and Dungeons club?
I mean, to be honest, I don't, I try to stay away.
Hopefully, they don't practice with the pre-medical professionals.
Yeah, they use oranges.
All right, thank you very much. It will be very busy next couple of months, I'm sure, for you guys. Superintendent's report.
Okay, more good news. Lots of good news. Three and a half pages, exciting. On March 16th, a nonprofit Alliance for Youth Artists and Writers announced the winners of the 2015 National Scholastic Art and Writing National Awards, with many students from LHS and VHHHS winning gold, silver, and honorable mentions at the Midwest region at large level. LHS senior Trey Tuise photographed video poker, and LHS senior Alicia Caffaro's jewelry piece, vertebrae, both earned subliminals at the national level of competition. These students will receive significant scholarship checks to apply toward pursuing their arts interests. This is the third-year District 128 has participated in this prestigious competition. On February 4th, 63 VHHHS students competed in a national American Mathematics Competition, AMC, to advance to the next round. The American Invitational Mathematics Examination, students needed to score 99 points or higher. Congratulations to the final following students on qualifying for the AIME that was held on March 19th. Justin Young, Isaiah Liu, Ryan Curtis, Aiden Kang, Zachary Kurzenberger, and Alexandra Spence. The LHS math team won the ICTM Regional Competition on February 28th at Stevenson High School and is now qualified for the state competition on May 2nd at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. The VHHHS Jazz Band, under the direction of Drew Russell and Randy Sundell, was named Class 2A Champions at the Rolling Meadows Jazz Festival. The festival hosted over 250 groups from five states as a result of winning. The band performed that night for 1,500 people, along with Wheeling, Naperville North, and Chilano High Schools. This is only the second year the VHHHS Jazz Band has participated in competitive events. The following students were named LHS March Students of the Month. Ellie Friga, Alexandra Hansen, Abby Dykstra, Sam Karash, Richard Lynn, Trinity Carlisle, Dylan Petz, Alejandro Garcia Escobar, Chris Heidvogel, Kelly Keefe, Joe Fusco, and Skylar Blacker. VHHHS Computer Science students competed in the Chicago Labor Programing Competition held March 7th at Niles West High School. held March 7th at Niles West High School. The team coached by VHHHS math teacher Adam Lukan placed fourth out of 22 teams. Members of the award-winning team were Peter Morris, Nathan Yu, Quinn Zooki, and Haras Manga. Also at the competition, Eunice Yun received a National Center for Women in Technology Runner-Up Award. We mentioned Sean Duffy earlier, but let me go a little further. Each year, the LHS AP Physics C students take the qualifying exams for the United States Physics Team. At the end of January, the students took the prelim exam consisting of 25 challenging multiple-choice questions. Approximately 4,000 students compete on this exam nationwide. Based on the results of this preliminary exam, 388 students were chosen as national semifinalists. As you know, LHS senior Sean Duffy was selected as a national semifinalist. Sean ranks in approximately the top 10% of students taking the exam nationally. In mid-March, Sean will compete in the semifinal run, which consists of two 90-minute open-response exams. These exams, in conjunction with scores on the preliminary exam, will be used to determine the members of the United States Physics Team. Approximately 20 students will be selected from across the country for this team. These students will attend a Wendy Training Camp in May. Five students will be selected from this group, as mentioned earlier, to compete at the International Physics Olympiad in Mumbai, India in July. The following students were named VHHHS March Cougar Class Afterward Winners. Paulo Pena Sota, Ellen Stenstrom, Matty Gilliam, Casey Fernbach, Mia Poliski, Jonathan Wallach, Rachel Lichtman, Argentina Tron, Karina Porfirio, Sophia Lee, and Elijah Reinhardt. LHS senior Aman Sahelio received first-place honors in a classical guitar senior division competition sponsored by the Society of American Musicians. The competition was held March 1st at the Music Institute of Chicago's Winnetka Campus. The LHS academic decathlon team placed fourth among 52 teams in the state competition held Saturday, March 4th, at Chicago State University. Team members were Katherine Liu, Jared Hutch, Madison Hedlin, Sean Bruno, Aruj Ahmad, Becca Laspike, Erica Cooney, Thomas Garcia, and Megan Yun. The team is coached by LHS physics teacher Mark Bucin. The VHHHS Y's team captured first place at the Y sectional competition. Team success included the following individual awards. Ryan Curtis finished first place in computer science and second place in chemistry. Isaiah Liu, second place in math. Conrad Koschish, third place in physics. Justin Young, first place in math, and first place in physics. The team coached by Josh Ravenscraft and Sarah Staub will compete in state competition at the University of Illinois at Champagne on April 13th. LHS Y's team members Elliot Stanki and Hannah Luizo qualified for the state Y's competition following their performance at last Friday's Illinois Academic Challenge sectional competition at VHHHS. Hannah finished fourth in chemistry, and Elliot finished first in both math and physics. They will compete in the state finals at the University of Illinois on April 13th. The Wildcats mock trial team competed in the state tournament at the University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign on March 14th. Seniors Emily Berger, Alicia Christopherson, Alexis Christopherson, Jessica Eimerman, Abby Militante, Ben Montgomery, and Brian Weiss led the team to its best finish in school history. Senior Jessica Eimerman was selected as best attorney, and junior Zach Clussen and Julia Wilson won Best Witness Awards. The team is coached by social studies teacher Dennis Duffy. LHS freshman in 2014 Youth Olympic Games bronze medalist Laura Zheng won the senior title at the 2015 Rhythmic Gymnastics Challenge at the US Olympic Training Center in Lake Placid, New York. Also in the senior competition, she posted a 67.750 in the all-around and won the ball competition with a 16.900. That's pretty incredible. The LHS Science Olympiad team qualified for the state tournament at this month's regional competition held at the College of Lake County. The team coached by Ursula Ahern and Mary Allen placed sixth overall. Individual medals were earned by, on the varsity, in anatomy and physiology, in fourth place, Katie Zhu and Holly Miller. In astronomy, fourth place, Sean Duffy and Maggie Schutz. Cell biology, sixth place, Nicholas Bone and Holly Miller. Compound machines, in second place, Rosanna Chen and Maya D'Souza. Disease detectives, second place, Maya D'Souza and Holly Miller. Experimental design, in third place, Maya D'Souza, Tara D'Souza, and Rosanna Chen. In fossils, fourth place, Lanny Stewart and Nicholas Bone. Mission Impossible, sixth place, Hezekiah Chan. Protein modeling, in fifth place, Holly Miller, Katie Zhu, and Estelle Mace. In scrambler, second place, Maggie Schutz and Jenna Okletree. In right stuff, second place, Tara D'Souza and Jenna Okletree. Junior varsity, anatomy and physiology, in third place, Melissa Manich and Kelly Zhu. In bungee drop, first place, Ryan Bonati and Megan Ajah. In cell biology, third place, Amanda Fan and Kelly Zhu. Mission Impossible, second place, Christopher Allen and Kyle Wallace. Protein modeling, second place, Amanda Fan and Kelly Zhu. Scrambler, in second place, Christopher Allen and George Legan. And right stuff, in first place, Melissa Manich and Julie McGormley. LHS 2003 graduate Amanda Blomgren Wiley has been named one of 30 finalists in the 2015 Golden Apple Awards for excellence in teaching. The awards recognize and honor outstanding teachers for their role in building a stronger, better-educated society. Amanda, a third-grade teacher at Lake Bluff Elementary School, was selected for more than 600 nominations, and Amanda's mother has worked for the district for a number of years, so I know, we know that she's very proud as well. So, that concludes the good news for tonight. Next on the superintendent's report, we're asking the board to approve 2015-16 IHSA membership renewals for Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School, and I think it would be okay on the motion that we do both schools at one time.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the IHSA membership renewals for both schools?
I move to approve the IHSA membership.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is, we're asking the board to approve the 2014-15 amended calendar, and we needed to amend, and Rita jump in here if I miss this, we needed to amend the calendar to reflect creating the testing conditions for the students on the testing day, where hopefully, this will be our last amendment for the year, but we'll see as the rest of the testing rolls out, and again, hopefully, this will be smoother next year. So, this will simply require your approval, and we'll be good to go.
I make a motion that we approve the amended calendar for 2014-15 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Batson.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson.
Okay, we first have five educational tour requests, so looking for motion to approve those tour requests as presented.
Who to approve the five tour requests as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Batson.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
All right, motion carries.
Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson.
Okay, we first have five educational tour requests, so looking for motion to approve those tour requests as presented.
Who to approve the five tour requests as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Batson.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Ratsir.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Batson.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Batson.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Batson.
Hi.
Arthur.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Deli Polly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
I'm here tonight to inform you of the frighteningly low morale at the high school. I've talked to many other teachers in every department, so I know I speak for the overall attitude of the school. I've also talked to every level of administration, from my building to the district level, about morale issues and haven't seen any changes in either policy or attitude, so I know I followed the proper chain of command in coming to see you tonight. Your teachers are under immense pressure this year, pushing through numerous initiatives. PIRA, which includes new Marzano standards plus student growth measurement, PARC testing, new common assessments that follow mandated district blueprint, and the one-to-one digital learning strategy. Any of these, any one of these would be cause for stress, but it isn't so much what is expected of us, but how it's being directed. Everything is very top-down and not collaborative at all. The many expert teacher voices aren't being heard and we feel like our input is not invited nor respected. For the first time in my 13 years here, feels like there's no dialogue between teachers and administrators, only directives coming down. And the environment isn't one where questions are welcome. We feel like if we ask hard questions, questions about what is best for our students, we're shut down, so naturally most have simply stopped asking. Just as troubling is the lack of clarity, there seems to be little cohesion from the district level to the building to department heads. This uncertainty is causing even more stress. The combination of lacking collaboration and clarity has created an environment of distrust that is verging on toxic. When I asked people how their year was going, I was met with tears, talk of early retirement and sabbaticals, and most disturbingly, the observation that while I asked them how their year was, no one in leadership had, despite the obvious strains of the year. More than one veteran teacher even compared the environment to the working without a contract year. I didn't come here tonight to complain. I wanted you to have a more complete picture of what was going on in one of your schools. I'd encourage you to inquire about Vernon Hills. I can't speak to them personally, but from limited conversations, I think you'd get similar feelings. I've also thought long and hard about potential solutions and have developed a few ideas in collaboration with my colleagues. Time doesn't allow me to go into those solutions now, but I'm open to any conversation, anytime, with anyone willing to listen. I honestly just want what's best for our kids, but I fear we're losing sight of that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, great. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, consent vote agenda. The agenda's listed, was reviewed earlier this month in committee. If I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please.
Move to approve the consent vote agenda, as listed.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
I need to abstain based on a personal relationship I have with one of the hires listed.
Okay. Batson.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chair, Personnel.
Okay, we first have five educational tour requests, so looking for motion to approve those tour requests as presented.
Who to approve the five tour requests as presented? Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Okay, next we have 2015-16 staffing recommendations. Now, Al, did you want to?
Let me make a couple of comments first, Al, and then we'll give it to Al. As the board is aware, one of the most important things we do as an administration working with the staff is our staffing recommendations, particularly for teachers in the district, and that occupies a significant amount of dollars in the district, so it is a very important task and we want the board and community to know that we take it very importantly. This process starts earlier in the year with students selecting their courses for the following year, teacher recommendations for courses, and then that generates numbers that the administration at the building and their department chair person start to take a look at through a process and a number of meetings at the building level with Maria and her team and John and his team. They come to some conclusions about what the staffing needs are. That team comes together with the district team for, it used to be three days, they've done such a good job in streamlining that process, we're down to a couple of days, and we go through every department and the staffing request and look at the number of sections that we need, which ultimately drives staffing. I do want the board and the community to know that the folks at the building level and the district office staff that's really led by Al in that process do an incredible job with this and they make, often make very tough decisions about what courses are going to run, how large those sections will be, number of students enrolled, et cetera, et cetera. So, the board will recall about five years ago, we started focusing on the concept with staffing is ultimately it's not the amount of FTE, it's what that FTE is going to cost for the following year because that's the number we plug into our budget projections and the conversations that we have with you, which drives our tax levy and all the things associated with that. So, after we generate a staffing number, we convert that to dollars. We also look at the number of retirements that we have, where we may lose a $100,000-plus salary and we may bring, we always use an average salary here, the following year, and that gives us a total number that we're looking for. And I think you're going to be very pleased, as the committee saw at the P&amp;P meeting a couple of weeks ago, that even though we are up in our number of course requests overall, we actually have, you know, a really nice reduction in the cost of that staffing after we factor everything in. The other piece of the last eight or nine years that we've used in staffing is that the concept that our special education staffing is actually a separate staffing piece. The reason for that is we don't know from year to year what our special education staffing is going to be and what we're going to need because that's totally based on the needs of the students coming out of their annual review meetings at the end of the year. So, in order to ensure that we're not borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, so to speak, we've always looked at that separately, although we folded into the staffing at the end, as the board's aware, if we had a residential placement recommendation one year, that could be upwards of $250,000. So, we look at all of those things as we factor the process through and Al is going to, for those board members that were not able to be at the committee meeting, is going to walk us through the work that we've done this evening and where we've ended up, and we think we've ended up at a really good place on all levels to first and foremost to meet the needs of our students, but secondly, it's very cost-effective. So, Al, if you want to take us from there.
Not only at the meeting, but in your board materials for this meeting, you have a summary of the staffing report for this school year, and just to summarize it briefly, we are, with our generally certified staff, we are up 0.2 in FTE, which is equivalent to one course throughout the district. In special education, we're down 0.6 FTE, which is essentially three sections of the course for a, for a sum of a net loss of 0.4 FTE. So, we're down 0.4 FTE across the district as a result of our staffing this year. So, we're not at zero, we're actually below zero this year. I think last year we came in at zero. That's in spite of the fact that we are up 290 course requests. That's the number of additional courses that students have asked for this year, or for next year above this year, and that, that equals about a 0.3 change in FTE, that we should be up a 0.3, but instead we're down a 0.4. Jim, you had brought that to our attention at the committee meeting, and you're right, when I went back and recalculated, it's not 2.3, which is what's written in the report, it's 0.3 FTE. You see the note there on that page. 290 course requests would equilibrate to 0.3 FTE, but in fact, we're down 0.4 FTE. So, we, as Prentice said, we staff as efficiently as we can and still serve the students, but do it as efficiently and economically as possible. If you look at the second page then, or the last page of the document, when you look at salaries, as Prentice was saying, if we look at the salaries of the retirees this year, you'll see those salaries combined are a little over $820,000. If we replace those persons on an average of $80,000 per person, that's about an additional $400,000. You'll see that in line D. The difference between the retirees and those we are going to hire or replace is estimated to be a savings on line E of about $421,000 as a result of that. We also, because of the change in student population for next year, we're going to discontinue three contracts. This isn't three staff members, these are three contracts that involve bringing staff from Seedall in on a, depending on the contract, a certain number of days during the year. We're going to discontinue three of those at least for next year at a savings of $260,000. And that you see in line G. And on line F, I just carried over from page two to page three, the savings of a decrease in 0.4 FTE. And so, in total, we're saving almost $713,000 as a result of the staffing and the retirees that will do for this year.
And just a couple of additional notes, you'll see an asterisk at the bottom of the second page that Al just referenced, and it says cost for potential staffing to the digital learning strategy for the two support positions, professional development positions, using an average salary of $80,000 would be $160,000. We have not included that obviously in here because you have not acted on that, but it gives you an idea. If you took $700,000 and subtracted $160,000, we'd still end up very favorable moving forward. The other question that sometimes comes up is why to use the average salary. After we're done in the hiring season, we use that as a benchmark for our overall hiring, so when we're done with our hiring, we'd like to be around or, you know, just below $80,000. And in the 10 years I've been here, we've never approached that number after we've done our hiring. We might have a high need staff member, for example, if we had to find a physics AP teacher, we might have to get an experienced teacher from someplace, but we have a nice balance. John and Maria and their teams do a really nice job of creating a nice balance of staff all the way from, you know, some younger teachers to more veteran teachers, and in that mix, we are, we are always, you know, at or below $80,000. So, we're confident on that number and Yaz updates that average number. Of course, climbs up a little bit every year as, as salary inflation moves forward. The other thing that I would ask for tonight, we would ask you to approve, we're making a recommendation to approve our staffing recommendations, but you'll note on page one, if you can flip back there for just a minute, that I always ask you for 1.0, that's a full FTE equivalent for contingencies. For example, we've had years where Vernon Hills has had some move-ins and in the summer we've had to create some other sections. Generally speaking, we have to use very little of that or none of that, and you'll see this year that, we always do a reporting out at this time, that we use none of the contingency this year. But that allows us to take care of those minor adjustment needs. We need to split an algebra class because now we have 34 kids signed up for algebra after the end of semester and the counselors have to take care of, you know, potential failures and ups and downs recommendations. So, we would ask you, I would ask you once again, and we would recommend that you grant us a 1.0 contingency, knowing that we'll only use that if we have to use that, and as always, we will report out if we have to use that. And with that, that's our recommendation on staffing and great thanks to John and Maria and their teams, Al, Rita, and everyone else that's worked on staffing. I think it's the best, it's always good, it was the best it's ever been this year through the collaborative work of this group.
Okay, so we're looking for motion to approve the staffing recommendations for 2015-16. So moved.
Second.
All right, just a few quick questions. This looks really good. I mean, you guys did a great job on this. But just to clarify, these numbers as salaries, are these salaries only or salaries and benefits?
Yes. Are these numbers salaries or salaries?
Great salary because the benefits are.
So, the benefits are a set along, okay. And then on the Seedall discontinuation of contracts? So, we discontinued the contracts and don't need the work, or we had some offset somewhere?
Some students require special services from Seedalls, oftentimes one-to-one services for a variety of learning issues, and so depending on the students and as they graduate, those contracts go up and down. So, this year we just happened to hit on a down year, we're going to discontinue three of those contracts.
Okay. And then my last question was, and that $80,000 contingency is over the other general contingencies here?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks, great job. Yeah, sorry. Roll call. Thank you.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, then we have the annual employment recommendations as listed. Looking for motion to approve those.
I move to employ, I'm sorry, move to approve the annual employment recommendations list. There's four categories.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Batson.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Okay, finally, we have the employment of employees. We have one resignation to accept. Motion.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
That concludes the report.
Okay, thank you very much. Facilities and Finance Committee Chair, Ms. Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Rudy. We have three bid recommendations this evening to consider. The first one is a asbestos abatement project.
Yes, we'd like the board to approve the Colfax Corporation Chicago for the removal of first floor and second floor asbestos at LHS. We had 12 companies bid this project and you see that we had a low of $146,890 to a high of $249,500, and the Colfax price is $146,890, and our estimate for this project is $190,000.
Thanks, Josh. Any questions or comments on this? We have a motion.
I move to approve, to approve the asbestos abatement contract as presented.
Second. Okay, and a roll call please.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, then we have the annual employment recommendations as listed. Looking for motion to approve those.
I move to employ, I'm sorry, move to approve the annual employment recommendations list. There's four categories.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Batson.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
That concludes the report.
Okay, thank you very much. Facilities and Finance Committee Chair, Ms. Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Rudy. We have three bid recommendations this evening to consider. The first one is a asbestos abatement project.
Yes, we'd like the board to approve the Colfax Corporation Chicago for the removal of first floor and second floor asbestos at LHS. We had 12 companies bid this project and you see that we had a low of $146,890 to a high of $249,500, and the Colfax price is $146,890, and our estimate for this project is $190,000.
Thanks, Josh. Any questions or comments on this? We have a motion.
I move to approve, to approve the asbestos abatement contract as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Rattser.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Yeah, even with the result of the change in the services, we were able to save $9,759 from our previous contract.
It's a base $21,000. Yeah. That contract, the last time, was actually pretty good.
It was? Remember, they came, said, "Fine." Yeah.
So, now they're calling, it's only a third of what it used to be. Okay, so.
Two more pieces of information. What was the range and what was the budget?
The original budget was, from last year, was $31,600. Our range, high bid was $79,560, and our little bid was $21,850.
What was the high one again, Mark?
The high one was Langton Group.
No, but how much?
$79,560.
21 to 79. And we verified with them that this isn't going to be the trash comp factor, although yeah.
No, we verified, in fact, there's a letter from the company, he was there at the bid opening, yes, it's a big corporation.
Yeah, I know them, they're big, that's why I'm.
And they're big in the complex here, so I think that's.
That's fantastic. Yeah, that's awesome. Just to be clear, I'll do the exam. This is a great deal as it is, period, so I may have genesses, but I mean, is that the kind of thing that we could at some point negotiate jointly with District 73 or something?
They don't have the kind of deals that we tend to maintain, and I think they do it pretty much on challenge, but the next time I meet with them, I would definitely.
I'm just thinking what else we could bundle in.
I would talk to them about it.
Okay. But at that deal, that's a good deal, we just.
So, just to do the mental math real quick, it seems like you broke even again.
I'm doing mental math for the summer.
We're ahead. We have some bids coming that may change.
All right. Take a minute, I'm up for a job.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Can we have a motion for this one?
So, I'm looking for a landscape concept management. Landscape concept, all right?
Yes.
Second.
Any other comments, questions?
Roll call please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Maurer?
Aye.
Batsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
And that concludes Facilities and Finance Committee.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nothing from property, CEDOL?
Yeah, we had our quarterly meeting a few weeks ago, and just to kind of update you on the withdrawal of the three Vernon Hills School Districts from CEDOL, just to refresh your memory, Stevenson and their two feeder districts are leaving CEDOL. They did stay a year longer than they had originally planned on to help ease the adjustment financially. And just also as a reminder, Lake Zurich and their feeder districts left the CEDOL a few years before that. So, it's been a pretty big hit on the cooperative. And so, in trying to work with the loss of money coming in, they have recommended, the executive board has recommended that we end operating the Sally Potter School, which is held at the former Westlake Forest campus, and enter into an agreement with Connections Day School to take this over privately and provide the students, you know, those services to the students, but as a private entity. So, in order for them to do that, they negotiated with the contract we have with Westlake Forest or with the Forest School District, they've agreed to end, they've required a two-year notification to end the lease with them, but they've agreed to limit it to one and then enter into the lease right away with Connections. So, that's all, you know, we're just working hard to try to make this smooth as possible, but to try to recoup some of the investment that we made into the building there, which was initially a $3.8 million back, it was a part of that big bond that was done in 2008 and '09, we will be recouping 1.4 million, and that will help them with the loss of the funds that are not going to be coming in from the schools that are leaving. So, that whole agreement and all the, you know, and I can maybe all, maybe Rudy if you want, but that's the gist of it, that all was voted to move forward and will be, and as of the end of our school fiscal year, will be coming up and moving forward. So, in complicating that, the bonds that were issued are issued as tactical exempt bonds, it must be used in government facility, not a private entity. So, that hall is to be restructured, and it looks like they're going to be able to redo all of that in a way that won't cost anybody any more information or any more money because of the rules and stuff. So, it's all going to be kind of a wash, actually, maybe even a little bit in our favor. So, those were the two kind of chunks, complicated things to make this all happen, but it looks like it's moving forward, you know, relatively smoothly, considering how hard they've all worked for a long period of time and what a, kind of a big hit to the cooperative that this has been, if the school's leaving. So, that was, you know, all voted on and moving forward, and, you know, a lot of the unforeseen complications will go ahead.
Well, Jim, will this private entity then provide its services?
Yes, so that we would then pay them. But it's going to save, you know, so much money and then infuse CEDOL with a little bit of cash, too, so.
Sort of one time, right?
Yeah. And then, we, you know, I don't really understand the whole way, we paid off our portion of the bonds early on, so I don't.
We did, if some of the board members, I think if you were here, we had the option to pay the bond off immediately, or pay the bond immediately, or over a period of time, and we chose to do it immediately, which we thought was good then, and in hindsight, it's even better, that we chose to do, we chose to use that option, so. Because there are some, again, work of old, but I think complicating factors for the districts that are still making payments on those bonds, so we don't have to, fortunately, we don't have to deal with that, so.
So, the good news is the services will still be provided for the students that need them. The cooperative, hopefully, will be able to stay together and be, you know, this will help a little infusion of cash to help it keep moving forward, and I'm sure there'll be some bumps along the way as they continue on, but into new territory without, you know, hopefully, a lot of districts won't continue to need.
Good. Thanks very much. All right, anything else?
Do you want to comment on the committee?
So, yeah, I just mentioned that last month, we also met as a committee of the whole, trying to spend a little bit more time in detail to look at our overall financial picture, and in particular, the reserves that we have in the district. So, you know, we had a couple of objectives. One is to really get clarity on the reserves that we do have. Two is to begin to work towards really where we believe and want to target where those reserves should be over the next couple of years. And then, three, to tie that into our longer-term capital plans and some of the investments that we think we need to do into the infrastructure of the two campuses. So, it was a very good first session, some good open dialogue. I would encourage anybody that wants to be part of those discussions from the public, whenever we have them, be more than welcome to participate. I think it's a good way to really see and understand some of the detailed discussions we get into when we discuss the district finances. Okay, so, you know, with that, we keep going.
And one final reminder, just for the community, remember to vote in the upcoming election. Alex will be finishing his tenure on the board after doing just an incredible job for us over a number of years. Jim is running for, we have three open board seats and we have three candidates. Jim will be running for one position, Bill will be running for a second position, and Scott Moose, who is actually here tonight with two of his daughters who are recognized, and Karen and I have done a lot of work with Scott on the District 128 Foundation. Scott will be a great member of the board. And since we're assuming that either Scott or his wife will vote for him, we're pretty sure he's going to be in since we have three slots and three candidates. And if they don't vote for him, I'll vote for him just to make sure that, you know, we have him on the board. So, we'll be looking forward to that. That election will be coming up right after we come back from break, so it's always good to have citizens participate in that process.
Are any of you guys 18 and eligible to vote this year? Yeah, are you registered?
No.
I'm no.
All right. Okay. Anything else? All right, thanks, good night, everybody. Oh, motion carries, I'm sorry.
I just learned how.